Welcome, everyone. We have two guests tonight to start out with. One was Howard Rake, President of CHP International, who are the new operators of the Northland Job Corps Center. He's not here yet. Mel and I met with him today and a few of his cohorts. So, in lieu of that, Jeff and Neil, do you want to speak briefly?
Sure.
We have Jeff Glassberg and Neil Kamen from the Northwest Supervi-- or High School. Is it High School Board?
Yeah, Virgin's Union High School.
And they asked if they could just take a few minutes just to brief us as a group on the bond vote coming up and the issues that it pertains to. And I thought for those people that hadn't read about it or heard about it, if they saw it on TV, they might learn something as well. So, we'll give you guys a little bit of time just to kind of give us a quick overview and rationale behind the project.
Great. I'll start. And since I am a gentleman. Gents, elected representative of the board. A few things are probably on the minds of our voters. And so, we're coming before you tonight just to tell you a little bit about the bond, but also a little bit more about a larger strategy that the school board has been developing around facility maintenance for our facility. Everybody knows from the news that the auditorium is now closed, that the kitchen is deficit and very old and code noncompliant. And there is a variety of issues, and I'll take you through those pieces one by one in a relatively brief verbal presentation here. But I just want you to know upfront that as we come before the voters, we're not doing so in another sort of "let's go for it again" kind of a try. That these are extremely necessary facility upgrades for our community's facility. And so, as a pretext, or not a pretext, as a precursor to that, and maybe for anybody who doesn't know the backstory, just rewind a couple of years here and begin when some of our school facility needs became particularly acute during 2010 and then 2011. It became pretty clear to us that the roof was leaking more and more. We were hearing more and more from the faculty about the condition of the auditorium. We were getting reports from the Department of Health about the condition of the kitchen. We were seeing water making its way into our building, your building, and a variety of other things. And decided it was time to bring forward to the voters a package of improvements, which you all know we did in two stages last year. And you all know that those were rejected both times. Just to rewind a little further, why we had to bring such a consequential package forward is because, as we all know, we're coming out of recession time. Nobody really has a lot of capacity to pay for new stuff right now. Nobody has a lot of capacity to pay more taxes. Our Virgin's High School Board has been mindful of that for a long time. And over the last three years, we've really pushed pretty rugged, pretty hard, pretty sharp budgets, where we maintained our increases to less than four one year, which seems like a big budget increase, I understand, then to negative 2%, then to negative .2% in the interceding couple of years leading up to where we are now. We did some program cutting. We did some staff cutting, which we had to do, but we also had to defer maintenance to the facility again and again and again. And even leading up to that time, that's one of the things that's easy to remove from the budget when you're looking at, are we supporting our teachers to support our kids or do we invest in the facility? And so, there's been a pattern of unfortunately not supporting the facility needs as much as needed to be. Hence, we came before the voters last year with a $6.4 million request for a very consequential upgrade, which would have done lots of things inside the facility and outside to basically put our school, our community's facility, to a fully modern stat-- state. That failed. We understood the tax implications were too big. Our voters weren't ready for that. We came back with a revised request, splitting some of those components, splitting the components we felt the school needed interior and the components exterior, and allowing voters to make a choice as to whether they wanted to support the interior and then incrementally also support the exterior. Neither of those issuances passed, so we heard that message. I've read in the paper that we haven't heard that message, but we really have heard that message. And still, the roof kept leaking over the winter and then over the spring. And it really became acute. And so, we met with you, Mel, and some of the folks on your board in the spring to strategize about how are we going to do this? We can't come back out for another bond vote right away. The law says we can only do two in a year. So, we requested to the voters of the district, and they supported a $600,000 bond request, short-term, five-year loan, not a full 20-year bond, to fix our roof. That was supported. We did that work. We've just completed that work. The roof doesn't leak anymore, notwithstanding what you heard in the news during the restoration of the roof, where there was a couple of short-term hiccups. But, you know, that work is done. So, let's step back and look at the rest of the facility. Those facility needs remain acute. The work, the words that you've read on the page of the Edison Independent about the auditorium status are true. We received very discouraging and frankly dangerous safety inspections on the condition of the rigging in our auditorium. The board decided, and the administration decided, for safety reasons and frankly because some of that stuff was uninsurable, that we had to take it down, which means that the auditorium is not available to service the kids and the music, the arts facility, the classroom, the auditoria that happens in there, and all those things. We subsequently went and did additional work to determine whether we could just go in there and quickly restore some elements to put a show in there to allow the school to function this year while we regrouped. And what we found out from our structural engineers is, in fact, the roof structure is such that it's at its maximum load with the air handlers that are up there now. And in order to restore the auditorium to its functionality that it's had and have it be compliant and safe and engineeringally sound, we need to move those air handlers. So, that's part of the package I'm here talking to you about. And I've gotten close to telling you some of the elements in great detail, and I want to pull back one more time and talk a little bit about the larger strategy. And then, we can go through the elements of the package that we're asking for.
We don't have all night either.
Very good. So, really under Jeff's leadership, because he's got some skills that some of us don't have because of his background, we've sort of developed a plan for managing the facility, which has four elements to it. The first was that short-term fix of the roof, that is done. The second is to very, very sharply prioritize and hone up the budget of a bond request for those things that just have to happen to put that school back to code complacency and full functionality. That's what we're here talking about tonight. The third is to develop a deferred maintenance plan for the facility that we will then forthrightly plan through our annual budgeting, so that we don't come to a place where in three years we need to replace some heating elbow joints, and it's going to cost $25,000, and we had no idea. And we have the deficit for it or figure out some way to spend it. And then, the fourth and most important piece is developing a capital fund. All of our elementary schools have capital funds. The high school does not. We haven't for a long time. It's time. And the board actually passed the first reading of a policy that would require an annual request of a capital fund, so that we don't have to come back to our voters on a regular basis and say, "Oh, something else is broken. We just don't have the money to fix it." So, fast-forwarding to the bond issue itself, it's a $2.8 million request, which is still a large number. $600,000 of that is, in fact, the bond, the short-term note that we just did for the roof. We'll wrap that in there. That's going to do a considerable amount of savings. I have the numbers if we have the time to get into them or the interest. Restore the auditorium to its current, or its prior functional state, which means putting lights that work, not a crazy amazing performance system, but lights that work to allow kids to perform their music. Put a light box in there that is code compliant, safe, and will not electrocute. My own son, when he rigs the lights and sets them up. Clean the auditorium. Clean the seats. Replace the curtains that were nonfireproofed and frankly falling apart and give it some paint. The kitchen, we maintain that the kitchen needs to be replaced. It is 1958 vintage. Maybe we can get some money for that stuff on eBay. I don't know. But it really needs to be replaced to become code compliant. It's energy, it's extremely energy inefficient. The heating and cooling, the cooling boxes, freezer, refrigerator, are in the central core of the kitchen, which means that they heat the interior of the building in order to produce cold in the interior of a building that is heated in the winter. There's some site work that needs to be done, both for safety perspective, to improve handicap parking, to improve the surfaces of the lots, which are beginning to crumble, and to address the water that's coming into this, pardon me, into the school. A little bit of touch-up work on the roofing. The roofing is good. It's sound. There's a little bit of fascia and soffit work that needs to be finished up that the budget didn't support. What am I missing? The last bit? I feel like there's a fourth element. Nope? Okay. So, we've got numeric details for all that. Here's a numeric detail that I think our taxpayers will want to know, is what's the tax implication of that? In the first year after, if this is successfully passed, it will be $11 on $100,000 home, peaking at $37 on $11,000, on $100,000 home in year two and declining thereafter. We're going to publish all these numbers, obviously. We've got a public meeting warned for the sixth in the high school, sorry, five, so six o'clock PM on the third. Thank you, Jeff, in the high school. So, that was information from a fire hose, maybe, and just happy to take questions or get into the details if you want.
Do you have any quick questions? Not right now. So, there's, you've got the meeting on the third.
Yep, yep.
I mean, I really wanted people to be aware of what was happening, so the board knows how to contact you. Neil, you live here. Jeff lives in Waltham. I mean, I'm looking forward to learning more about it, but I think that for now and for this forum, thank you. Unless, is there anything else you want to bring up? Jeffrey, you have any comments?
I just wanted to mention, we really appreciated the opportunity to meet with the city council back in June, when we were wrestling with what to do about the roof and how to sequence this. So, thank you for the opportunity to work cooperatively at that point. We're hoping that the community will support this bond issue. It really is a short list of necessary work for a building this community already owns. We need to maintain it. It's deferred maintenance. So, that's the bottom line about this. Thank you for your time.
Let me ask you one question. So, I'm going to say when the bond passed, because I think it's going to probably need to be passed. Are you going to start the fund for future in that first year? Or are we going to absorb that in the fixing and then put it away?
Take that. That's going to wind up being a separate vote each year of the voters, just as it is at the elementary school. So, it's a separate question that's put before the voters every year as to whether or not they will fund the reserve. And there are strings attached to that, and the board should be restricted in how it spends that money, only for long-term capital items would be the intent. And you're right. You know, we can't swallow everything all at once. But clearly, the idea was that we're approaching the voters in a way that shows responsible stewardship going forward, so that we try to avoid situations where things we know are, that are going to need to be replaced, like a roof, have us coming back to borrow money. We should be setting that money aside. And there's other stuff we should be paying cash for. That's the culture we're trying to shift towards.
On the air handlers, are you going to be completely removing them off the roof? Are they, so they're going to be gone?
What the plan is there is that those handlers will be, first of all, they need to be replaced. They cannot be run. They're so old and decrepit that by running them, you can't hear what's happening in the, in the performance space, in the auditorium. What we're going to do is we're going to get them off the roof and onto the vestibule roof. So, that main entryway, as you go in, and it's on your, you know, the auditorium's on your right. So, we'll put them there, running ductwork over the top. That will take that load off the roof and allow the roof to then absorb the weight of the rigging.
All right. Who else?
So, if I could just have one final closing statement is that, I mean, there's all sorts of perspectives. Some of our, some of our citizens will support this. Some of our citizens will not, and some of our citizens will want to know more. And so, as you all are approached, I hope you'll feel free to let people know to call me or to call Chris Cusino. They're our, you know, they're elected representatives on the board, and we're happy to share information at any time. That's reasonable.
Great. Thank you so much, Neil.
Very much, folks.
Thanks for coming. Okay, next, we will have our next guest, Howard Rake. Howard, you were meant late, so we had to start with someone else. I'm sorry about that.
For which I thank you for that.
We're very punctual here.
Well, I hope you excuse us.
Howard is the President of CHP International, the new operator of Northland Job Corps. And we met today, talked for a while, Mel and I, and Howard, and he'd like to brief the council on the organization and what their plans are for the, for the Job Corps.
And I know you don't have all night, so it won't, it won't take more than a few minutes. Thank you all, Mel and Bill and the rest of you, for having us over tonight. I'll introduce briefly the pretty faces that came with me. Some of you know, maybe all of you know Tony Stangens, who we hope is going to take over again as Center Director of Northland's Job Corps Center. Behind Tony is Lauren Morales. Lauren Morales is a Senior Associate with our, with our company, CHP International. And she is a former Job Corps Center Director. She directed the Job Corps Center in Chicago a few years back and is the person who, in our organization, has the most in-depth familiarity with the Job Corps program as it is run at a center. The company has done other work with the Job Corps that I'll tell you about in a moment, but Lauren is kind of our brains for Job Corps Center operations. And sitting next to Lauren is Brian Fox. Brian Fox is President and CEO of a company called Education and Training Resources. They are a major subcontractor that's going to be working with CHP International in the operation of Northland's Job Corps Center. So, before you ask, you're going to ask what does CHP stand for? So, I'll tell you that the full legal name of CHP International is CHP International. I like to tell people when I'm asked the question, though, and I hope, I hope we'll earn the right to come back and say it again a year from now, when people ask me what CHP stands for, I say it stands for excellence. And I hope you'll, I hope, I hope we'll produce results that will make you agree with that. So, a few brief words about CHP International, and then I'll say some things about ETR as well. We've been in business since 1978, and during a good chunk of that time, our company did training of Peace Corps volunteers in several countries in Latin America and the Caribbean. And we became interested in working with the Job Corps, because it seemed like a way that we could take some of the experience that we had acquired doing training, design of training, to reach particular learning objectives, take that and transplant it in some fashion to a domestic program with a valid social purpose, which I believe very strongly the Job Corps is. And so, many years after we first had that idea in mind, we now find ourselves with the award of the contract for Northland's. The way that came about is through a partnership between CHP and ETR. ETR has a lot more experience running Job Corps centers than we do. We're, we're starting. We've been working with outreach and admissions, which is recruitment of young people from the program, and career transition services, which is providing those services to the kids when they finish the program, if they need to get attached to the workforce, and we hope stay attached to the workforce. So, we, among other contracts, we run the outreach and admissions and career transition services contract for the New England region. And we have our project office here in Virgin's. And many of you probably know our project director, who's a predecessor of Bill's by the name of Sue Clark. I think many of you know her. So, she is our project director with her office on Main Street here in Virgin's. Well, we partnered with ETR because that partnership was attractive to us, to both companies, for a number of reasons. One of which was that, as are many of, many government contracts, many federal government contracts, not just with Job Corps, not just with the Department of Labor, this one was a set aside for small businesses. And Brian's company, Education and Training Resources, was kind of getting punished for its success. They had started out as a small business and now, today, operate four Job Corps centers, two in the state of New York, one in Connecticut, and one in Georgia. But as a small business, they were ineligible to compete for the Northland's Job Corps Center. And so, that provided an opportunity for the two companies to work together, because we were eligible. It was a way for us to grow toward a vision that we had held for a long time and a way for ETR to participate in this endeavor as well. I want to say just a few words about, about what our vision is for Northland's Job Corps Center. Now, I'm aware that there's a degree of ambivalence in Virgin's about the Northland's Job Corps Center that stems from a variety of things. And no part of it has to do with difficult negotiations between the state of Vermont and the federal government. And there are probably some other things, I know there are some other things that have to do with the profile of the center in the community. So, I was mentioning earlier today that when I was on the plane this morning, I pulled out our proposal and started to read it from the beginning. And I'm mentioning this because the first 30 or 40 pages, the first 30 or 40 pages of the proposal that we submitted to the federal government in an attempt to win this contract have to do with outreach and partnership development here, in Virgin's and in the surrounding area. This is one of our two or three highest priorities. We know, we know that it's been rough going, and part of this has to do, well, you all know plenty of the reasons, part of it has to do with the crazy year that the Department of Labor and the Office of Job Corps went through last year, culminating in the, in the government, federal government sequester, but that was not all of it. And that, and, and, and one of the, one of the consequences of everything that went on last year was that our predecessor, Alutic, kept having its contract extended. And when that happens, it creates instability, it creates doubt, it creates difficulty in maintaining continuity, and all of those things plagued them. And I guess that, in a sense, these are things that we inherit. So, our highest priority, I would say, is reaching out to the community here, to employers, to civic organizations, to, to, to nonprofits, to faith-based organizations, and on and on, and to try to, to restore or to create in the first place a network of relationships that will help support the Northland's Job Corps Center and in turn, to have the Northland's Job Corps Center working in the community and with the community on things that are of importance to the community. A couple of things that get mentioned all the time, I didn't know about it before a few days ago, but a couple of things that get, that mentioned all the time are that the urban forestry people come out and help, and there are other kinds of things that, that the students at the Job Corps Center have done, and there are more, I promise you, that they will be doing. So, outreach and partnership development in the community is one of our highest priorities, is probably the one that you're most interested in hearing about, but there are a couple of other things, too. We, we, the center has not performed particularly well. And the, you may know that the, the Job Corps is a statistics-driven program. It's, it's almost incredible. The number of different metrics that are used to gauge the performance of each of the 125 centers across the country, not only gauge the individual center's performance, but to rank it against all of the others. This is really something out of Kafka. It feels that way sometimes. You laugh, but it's true. So, anyway, so Northland's hasn't been doing very well at some of the important dimensions. So, the other area that we're going to be turning our attention to, and this has to do with, with, in some cases, finding new qualified staff, in some cases, hiring incumbent staff and retraining them. But one way or another, we have to turn our attention to those performance things. And they're, they're basic ones. They're things like, like academic achievement. I mean, that's one of the, one of the big purposes for which, for which kids are here. And I think that the, so, so the performance aspects. And then, I think I mentioned before, the kind of profile that the Job Corps Center has here in the community. Mel and Bill voiced some opinions and, opinions and concerns about how the young people appear, how they behave, when they come into town, and with what frequency and in what numbers and so forth. What we want to do is we want to, and we have plans, too. I shouldn't say just that we want to. I think we have plans, and we're going to put them into practice. You'll be able to look and see and give us feedback. We have plans to work on the culture of that community up there, the culture of staff and the culture of students, so that there is, you know, an increase in pride, in self-respect, in respect for the neighborhood that we're in, and a desire to be good neighbors. And I think that with that, I'll just stop, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? I'm sure that we'll be in touch and communicate, but does anyone have any, any?
Yeah. I'm not familiar now, I used to be, with the percentage of Vermonters that are at Job Corps Center. And I'd like to know what the percentage is and whether there's any goal that is to make that percentage higher as far as the Vermonters.
We've learned that at present, it's between 25 and 30%, I believe. That's right? Yeah. As to whether there's a goal, we get, we actually get our goals from the feds. And I don't have the information to give you. I can get it for you, but I don't have to give you.
We found out that all of the students are from New England, except for the Virgin Islands.
There may be a couple from the Virgin Islands. I told, I told Bill before that the Virgin Islands are in the Boston region. There are also a handful from across the lake.
Oh, okay. Anybody else have any questions? We had a great meeting today. It was, it was a pleasure meeting all of you.
Well, we, we liked it very much and appreciate it very much.
Good. Well, let's, we'll keep the lines of communication open.
We will.
Do you mind a quick question?
No, Andy, go ahead.
Yeah, just, I know, maybe you touched on this, but certainly, you know, the Chief Merkel has been concerned about the reporting issues. Is that something you discussed today?
He couldn't make it.
He was unavailable. He had a family emergency. They are going to meet and discuss it. It's definitely a priority.
Yes.
And I think from our perspective, we're on the same page.
Okay, great. I'm sure that's some of the instability.
Yes, it is. And in an earlier phone call that Mel and I had, that was put on the table, it's very clear, it's something that we, we want to get, we want to get, we want to get the, the issues aired and the different, if there are differences of opinion, we want to get the difference of opinion aired and work toward a memorandum of understanding that reflects decisions that all parties can accept. And then, once that memorandum of understanding is in place, we will guarantee that it will be honored, that it will be reliable.
That's great. Anybody else?
I just have a comment about that particular thing. It's, it's not a new problem. We've had a problem with reporting incidences to the police department for many, many years and several operators before you. So, hopefully, you're the one with the golden solution.
Well, I think the first part, I think the first part, I think we're two parts of the solution. I think the first part is coming together on as many of the points that might be under discussion as possible, basing a memorandum of understanding on that and working with that and making, you know, building trust that everybody's going to know that all sides can rely on that. The other thing is, I think another approach is that where there are differences of opinion about how we should conduct ourselves or how the police should conduct themselves, that we say, "Okay, we might not be able to reach an agreement today, but let's experiment with one way or the other for three months or five months or six months." Then, we see what happens. We all come back into the room, and we say, "This is not working. We're going to change. You've got to go back to the other way." Or we say, "Well, gosh, this is working. Everyone's, everyone's okay." But we can't, we can't be paralyzed. We have to, we have to decide to do something, even if it's on an experimental basis.
Who else?
We look forward to the change.
We look, we look forward, we look, this is, this is very exciting for us. It's, it's, it's our company's first Job Corps Center. Couldn't ask for, couldn't ask for a better welcome and couldn't ask for a lovelier... Couldn't ask for, couldn't ask for a better welcome and couldn't ask for a lovelier center.
Great. Thank you, Howard. Nice to meet you. Take care. Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna move down to five speeds so we can approve CJ Holler so they can go home.
She brought her daddy.
That's right.
She sat in.
So we have an application for antinorant vendor license for CJ Holler's sand road, trash drop off at the public works area. Wednesdays, two to six, Saturdays, eight to noon. How many years have you guys been doing this now?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Wow.
So we have an application, we have proof of liability insurance and we have an application check, so all we need is a motion.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, motion second. For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Could I say something?
Yep.
Of course, I'm always going over there on Wednesdays or Saturdays and it seems like I'm always hitting when there's a lot of people there. Is there any way that sometimes when we're backing up and then the people are coming out and nobody's moving where we're recycling because they're waiting to put their garbage bags out there? Is there any way that somebody could be there and say, you know, like, because from where your truck is up, it's all open and you do have one of those things right there, but it's like an open space. So it seems like if somebody could just say, you know, you guys can park up there or, you know, go up that way more so people can get through. Because once they start, there's, one time I sat there for almost five and a half minutes, couldn't move, couldn't even get up the hill because the people that were also dumping their rubbish would stay right in line to make that corner and then everybody was just sitting behind. And, you know, I, I don't know, it's, it's a hard thing for you to figure it out.
We do, we do try to very proactively keep the line moving. Occasionally, it is simply that you need to wait your turn. Everybody is doing their best. There are times that are higher volume than others. Everybody wants to be first on Wednesday. If you don't like sitting in line, don't try to come before two thirty on Wednesday.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about when we're
But I, I understand what you're saying. There are two lanes coming out. More people in the right-hand lane trying to make a right-hand turn are coming to rubbish. Sometimes if somebody doesn't want to stop at rubbish, taking a left-hand turn and going around the block would save them some time. We do try to get down the corner to direct traffic. I know a couple of weeks ago it was a backup. I was trying to direct traffic. I couldn't get the customer's attention because the person sitting three cars back was incapable of removing their hand from the horn.
Lucky you.
So it really cut down on my ability to. They're a bit charmed by the person that, you know, and sometimes there's
We do try to get people to pull up around. We really do. When it's put a block up, we'll tell people to go around. People get out of their cars, which it holds a long note, but we have no control over it.
No, I know that.
You can't make this thing, and the same thing happens.
And we try to tell people to go around, but some people just sit there anyways.
Yeah.
As long as he's going to give you the best of his effort, you know, I mean, everybody We really try. People aren't very patient in some cases.
Well, the time I was there is when there was nobody down there to try to tell them to pull around because it seemed like every time I was there, it was like, you know, people were, one guy
On the other hand, if I'm, if we, if I allocate a person to go down on the corner to direct traffic, one, there's some liability there.
No, right on the corner, right there when you're coming off from
Well, yes, but that's still directing traffic, which, and, and then we're also slowing the line down because that's one less person removing, there's one less person working actively removing to get the line moving. Because, but yes, we do, we do, and we're aware.
Well, I've just had people come, you know, talking to me about it and then I've been there a couple of times, so I thought I'd bring it up because there was nobody there and if they could have, they could have gone up at that time when I was there.
Do you think that there's any, would there be any benefit of having longer hours than we currently have or is there really periods of time that it's real busy and then there's some slow times?
There, there are
Can't tell if people want to come.
Yeah.
And most of the time, you know, it's, it's really busy between two and three thirty. When it starts getting dark at five and four thirty, it gets really dead between five and seven.
Yeah, I know, it appears, correct me if I'm wrong here, I think you try to serve three people at a time. You know, there's like, you try to get three cars and of course, it's everybody has exactly the same amount.
You try to do that and there's a line.
Right.
And the person in the back is going to get out of their car.
Right.
Direct you to want to grab a bag of garbage. It's always the person in the back that does it.
Oh, yeah.
And there's, you know.
I think you'd do a great job.
You really can't say, lady, get in the car and pull up please. But you really, and, you know, and we are aware.
I think, you know, one of the things that's, it does appear that you are adequately staffed. You've got, you've got, I don't want to say you've got an army of staff people down there, but you've got plenty of staff to make sure that you're, it's not like you have two people trying to wait on three people, you know. So I think that that's key is to make sure that your staffing level is maintained.
Could you, could they create a sign that says about staying in your car and we serve the first three people in line, you know?
You, you could.
And that would, might help, that might help, that might help them back to keep the people in their cars.
There's, there's still people that pull the wrong way going down through the recycling and that's been, the truck's been down there for twelve years. There's still people that pull in the wrong way.
Not necessarily new people.
No.
Zig, I think you have best bad luck.
Well, you know, if, if it gets bad, gets worse and if we have to get together some Saturday and look at it and try and think of a different process, we'll do it. But, you know, we'll work with you and try and make it all work, so.
Have that in the day or something, we can help you do that.
Okay.
If you don't have to come, then we have a personal, please don't.
Okay.
Please don't.
We won't. No, we'll just burn it all.
And we have, I mean, and last year was better because we told people, if you don't need to be here, wait, please. I mean, because
Christmas and New Year's is both on Wednesday this year.
Yeah, just checking that.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna be open on Thursday.
Oh, okay.
The day after Christmas.
Yeah, because actually I've made a rain, you know, and I haven't made that telephone call yet, but typically we, we increase frequency during that period of time and add a, add a day if we can.
Casellas will probably, they will be open the first on, on Wednesday. I'm sure of that. So it'll probably just be Christmas week will be open on Thursday instead of Wednesday.
We worked a year's date before with them.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, it might, let me, let me talk to them because it might not be a bad idea to see if we can't do Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
I know, was it last year that we, that we added?
We did that, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
It, it was
It's all right.
We had a lot of time to sit around with them. It was very, it was, it was not
It didn't work. Just people are
They're trained.
They're trained.
It used to Wednesday, I wouldn't say Saturday, not Thursday, but we got some, but not regularly.
Well, obviously one of the keys, and it happened to us one year where Casella showed up at one fifty-nine when it started at two. And the key, one of the keys is, is on Wednesdays after Christmas, you really need to get there at least thirty minutes, if not forty-five minutes before the start time because that's when cars start lining up. And so we added, we added like an hour or something to the, to the deal with them. And we just need to coordinate that with you so that you're aware of the same, same deal.
Great. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
Two sets of minutes need approval. We have the regular council meeting of October twenty-second. Has everyone had a chance to read them? Ziggy made a motion to accept, second by Lowell. Any corrections, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we had the special meeting on November fifth to receive the petition for the gas referendum. And I will accept a motion to accept those minutes. Lowell, motion made. Ziggy will second that. That meeting lasted about ten minutes and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I abstained.
Thank you, Randy, for abstaining.
I abstained as well.
Okay, so that's done. Where are the warrants? We don't see them anywhere.
I had them.
They're in the stack.
I think they're on, oh, you know what? There they are.
They're right there. Okay, we can start passing those around because I didn't, I didn't see them anywhere.
I did, I did have them.
We have in the agenda Kennedy Brothers, Inc. license agreement for the road. Bob has not gotten back to us and Mel actually found a few small issues with it. So I don't know that we need to go into it tonight. We have other things we need to discuss, so I think we're going to table that till the next meeting.
One of the things
There is in your packet, the map and so on, so.
Maps certainly need some work. There's, the way that I wrote it was for possession's exclusive use for Kennedy Brothers for their parking. And in looking at it more carefully today, there's a portion of that area that's actually used by country-owned products in there. You know, they, they actually back into that, they have a couple of warehouses there and they did a lot of work relative to the loading docks there. So trash that map, we'll come back with one that'll make more sense. And I, like as Bill said, I didn't hear back from, from Bob relative to the language. And it is something that's needed for the Development Review Board to be able to entertain a future application and expected application for other uses at Kennedy Brothers.
Virgin's Community Development Review Committee, which is also known as the Maynard Building Revolving Loan Fund. We have the revolving loan fund. The proceeds come from the Maynard Building on Main Street. And there is a committee that is responsible for making decisions on those loan requests. The committee has a two-year term. The term actually ended in March of two thousand and thirteen. And I did not, was unaware of that and Mel brought it to my attention a couple of weeks ago. So we've looked at the list of people and looked at the, at the policy and so on. We have a couple of changes and I want to announce some new board members and hopefully we can vote on this and reconstitute this board. There were seven members according to the policy. Banker, real estate broker, member of the city council, city treasurer, representative of the Virgin's Partnership, representative of the Greater Virgin's Chamber of Commerce and a citizen at large. We no longer have a Greater Virgin's Chamber of Commerce. Mel and I talked about that and since this isn't really, I don't think that we need to have seven members or an odd number, we thought it would be wise just to take that line item off, at least for now. If we get a chamber and they want to be put on here, we can do that. What we've done is I've talked to some of the people that have served before. Lynn, you were on as a broker. Since you're on the council, I thought you might step off. Is that fine? I, I talked to Nancy Laro, see if she'd be interested and she said she would be honored to serve. I did talk to Chris Collette and she was the banker. She's willing to serve. Ziggy, you're the council member. If you want to stay on, that's great. Didn't know. You know? Don't think it's a big burden.
No.
Joan is our treasurer. Scott Gaines was the representative from the Chamber of Commerce. He has agreed to take over the position for the Virgin's Partnership. And I talked to Henry Broughton, he was our citizen at large and he's willing to serve again as well. So if those six names sound okay to you, are we in a motion on this? Probably.
Yeah, the other thing that we, we also want to do is change the name of this committee because it's confusing. It's called the Virgin's Community Development Review Committee and we get it, we can easily get confused with the Virgin's Development Review Board.
Yeah.
So maybe that's what the committee needs to do is come up with a name.
Yeah.
Better name. But to me, it ought to be something about revolving loan fund, you know.
Yeah, essentially that's what it is.
Why don't you just call it the Virgin's Revolving Loan Fund?
There you go.
Okay.
That's too simple.
Committee.
No, it sounds good to me.
Right.
Right to the point.
I think we discussed that when we had the first meeting, why it was that and we changed it.
It was on the agenda and I wrote Mel an email saying, is this the revolving loan committee? Because I didn't, I wasn't really sure. So, great. So will someone make a motion, please? Okay, for the, those six members, second Lowell, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. And so that, this appointment will go until March of two thousand and fourteen.
Two thousand, is it a year or two?
It's two years.
So it's fifty. Fifty.
Fifty, right. You're right. I received a call a week or two ago from the Lake Champlain Maritime Museum, Chris Jarrett, who works there. They were writing a grant proposal for two thousand and fourteen education program that was going to be named Up the Creek. And it was going to include participants that would basically paddle, row up and down Otter Creek, looking at wildlife, nature, talking about history. They have lots of different partners and educators and so on that were going to work on this with a variety of disciplines, ecology, natural history, human history, bird, plant, fish and animal species, pollution, farm runoff and so on. It sounded fascinating. And they just wanted to make sure that the city of Virgin's would support them in this effort in their grant application. If they got the grant, they would come back to us and we'd talk about details. They wanted to have availability, put boats in at Falls Park and so on. Nothing that seemed onerous. So I just, I said I'd bring it up to the meeting. We don't need to vote on it, but if, if it's okay, we'll just say, great, we're supporting you at this point and come back when you're, be more detailed. Randy?
Yeah, actually, we have actually done a grant for them in the past. Because of the way the grant was, the city actually had to be the grant vehicle.
Sponsor for the vehicle.
And I don't know whether they ever got that. It was for doing the preliminary work for a restoration facility. There, there's one of the revolutionary boats that's on the bottom, which they would like to bring up. But they can't bring it up unless it can go into this restoration facility, which sinks it into a certain kind of fluid for a certain amount of time because it would disintegrate if it came out into the air. And there's only one of them in the country and it's in Texas, I think. And they would like to have one here. It's a multimillion dollar facility, but you have to go through this preliminary grant stuff to get the study as to how it's going to be built, where it could be built and so on. And we needed to support them. So there, there's a, we've already established a precedent of supporting them in, in things. And I don't know whether that ever came along. I haven't heard anything from it, so I guess they, they didn't get it. It was, it was highly competitive.
Yeah. Well, this seems to be, you know, pretty, pretty low, low maintenance in terms of what the city would require, so. Okay, holiday light costs. This is, I don't want this to get into a twenty-minute discussion, but we, I was talking, Mel and I were talking about lighting, various things. And Jimmy Laro was, came in and we were talking about the park lights, which are, which I think are actually beautiful. And, and he was bemoaning the fact that it takes them a couple of days to put up the lights. And they have to buy, buy new, new lights every year because some of them don't work and it gets to take more time if you don't have new lights. So we figured out it costs about three thousand dollars a year to purchase the lights and install them and take them down in, in cash and, and labor costs. And, yeah, Mel and I talked about it and we went down to the park and looked around a little bit and so on. And I thought, well, yeah, maybe there's a way we can reconfigure this or something. And so I ended up asking a couple of folks that week about it and, and I got, everyone said they love the lights the way they are and they didn't want to change it because it really is a great, makes the city green, look beautiful and it really makes Virgin's look great at Christmas time. And I said, okay, well, let's just bring it up to the council for a quick discussion. And, and actually I was, so I was doodling this afternoon and I, I calculated this three thousand dollar cost and it's two and a half dollars for a two thousand, two hundred thousand dollar home. So I don't think it's really a financial burden on anybody. But the one thing that apparently happened, when these first started to happen, some of the fraternal organizations offered to contribute some of the cost for the lights and so on. Is that right? Your, your understanding?
Well, it's before my time.
Was it before your time too?
During my time.
The chamber used to buy them.
Did they?
We used to put them up.
Okay. So anyway, so the chamber, nobody buys them anymore. We do. And I said, well, yeah, maybe there's, maybe there's some kind of a partnership we can we can forge with, with some organizations where we can either get, you know, a little bit of cash or a little bit of labor or something. I just wanted some input because Jimmy needs to order the lights and we need to figure out when we're gonna put them up.
Relatively soon.
Probably, yeah, yeah.
I vote no change.
Lynn votes no change.
I'll second that.
Ziggy votes no change, Joe?
No change, I like, I love those lights.
You like them?
Yeah.
Rennie, okay, Rennie?
I think we should go with them, but I, I think we should consider whether we do them the same way as we've done them. But I, I think we're, I was out that day when you and Mel were out on the-
Right, yeah, that's right, yeah.
And talked about whether, instead of just hanging them totally on, um, the branches, wrapping them around the, the trunks of the trees and then only coming up part of the way into the branches, which would do a couple of things. One, it's easier to put on, secondly, they would not be as susceptible to the wind, which is, is what causes them to go out.
Might not ruin them.
Yeah, um, and, um, so, I mean, that, that was just one thought. At, at one time, back a few years ago, when I was manager, we looked at, um, getting the, um, what's the other kind of lights that last?
LEDs.
LEDs.
Yes, which are, which are a, a lot more expensive to buy, but they last longer.
Yeah, that's what we use.
That's what we get, man.
Is that what we have now?
Yeah.
Oh, and they still go every year, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I, it's funny because I looked those up-
It's really the wind, it's really the wind gets the wind.
And probably, and probably the removal that, that may fray some of the wires or knock some of the bulbs.
Yeah. Yeah, they are, and, and actually I, I was reading online some, and they say that even with those, there is a, a factor, damage factor or something. If you go to Home Depot, they'll replace them for you for free, but, uh, so there you go, go buy them at Home Depot.
I think we should definitely do it, I mean, if we have, if we have an organization that wants to contribute, that's great. But I, I think just one of those things that the city-
It's a holiday, it is Christmas.
It's Christmas.
And they do look wonderful.
Let's do it on Christmas.
All right, I'll break that news.
All right, yeah, he's not, you know, once in a while, he's just gotta do it, so.
Maybe we can experiment with wrapping a couple of trunks just to see what they look like.
A holiday stroll's like in less than, or it's two weeks from, and this one they usually light it, right? So they're better.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, um, city ordinance review, did you get that spreadsheet put together?
I didn't, Bill.
Okay.
But, but that's what's headed your way.
Yeah.
We're actually gonna ta- take, Bill, Bill has a bunch of notes of who's assigned to what and I haven't been keeping score, so.
I forgot what I was-
We're gonna create a spreadsheet, we're gonna keep a spreadsheet, we're gonna create a spreadsheet for you, certainly for the next meeting. We may email it to you to show you where you fit in this.
In the scheme.
In this scheme.
Um, yeah, and, and, and Rennie talked about going to the VLCT website and looking at ordinances. I went and I couldn't find any, I, they prob, Mel thinks they're there, I just couldn't find them.
You have to build a resource library.
And I've got, I mean, I printed out some, there's a noise and a parking and a dog ordinance and a park ordinance.
Maybe I did the dogs.
These are from Middlebury, I'll give them to whoever works on what. But the other thing that, that this ties into is that Mel and I had a meeting today with Jeff Margolis, who is our webmaster, about just kind of rearranging parts of the website and we wanna have all of the ordinances and the policies available on the website as just like a, as a PDF. And so it would be smart for us to have them revised and rewritten. But, you know, by the time we get this, this update done and so on, so there will be something coming out and we'll get the committees going and so on, so I apologize for the delay, but it happens.
Life happens.
Life happens.
Have we asked whether the Resource Center would, would actually help us to revise the-
I have not, that's not a bad idea.
Because I, I, I think that's one of the functions of them being there is to help communities with their ordinances and policies.
I can certainly call them and ask them.
And they, they might actually say, well, send them to us and we'll give you a preliminary review of them and-
Yeah, okay.
At least get them up, you may, you know, get up to the legal part.
Right, up to the part, not legal.
Okay, that's a great idea, okay. Uh, Mel?
Sure.
You're up.
Yeah, I'm, uh, let me just, you, you have a budget report, I actually have not had time to, uh, go through it in any detail, but, it's obviously gonna change here when the snow comes. I handed out a, uh, police station budget report and, uh, they're, uh, we're still in good, we're, we're fine at this point. You know, we had a change order, the two change orders, one dealing with epoxy floor for the two holding cells and the other change order dealing with the surge tank, which ended up costing twenty-four hundred dollars as opposed to forty-four hundred dollars. I won't go into the whole arguments of, you know, what happened there, but really, it's the, it's really the easiest escape is just to pay the twenty-four hundred dollars and call it a, and call it a day as opposed to, um, there, the, uh, what, you, we could, we could do anything, we could put a two-inch line all the way down to in front of Kennedy Brothers, uh, with the directional boring, which they think would cost eleven thousand dollars, which could quickly turn into twenty-two. The, the other alternative would be to put a line across, was, the other idea was to put a line across the street. The problem is we found out that that line is underneath Country Home Products building. So that, that building is built over, over that line, so I just felt, uh, in, you know, when I talked with the water district, you know, we don't have any proof, there's no proof that the water district told the owner at the time that they were discontinuing the line and we don't have any proof that they didn't tell them, so I just wanna move on and just pay the twenty-four hundred bucks, the toilets will flush, we'll be just fine. Uh, the, so then with these, those are really the only, those are the only surprises, if you will, that we have in this. We, uh, we did meet with our, uh, phone person and our computer person and the security person yesterday and today and we have that all worked out. Uh, I suspect that there will be a little bit of overage in, uh, it's amazing how many data ports you need for, uh, this, uh, stuff. So, anyway, it'll, uh, we, and we actually, one of the things we don't wanna do is, is, we wanna plan ahead a little bit because it costs you ten times more to add a data port, uh, down the road than it is to just throw it in the wall when the walls are sitting there wide open. So we're, uh, we're gonna take care of that, but at this, I met with, uh, Don Johnson, he's the surveyor that we engaged to deal with the Vermont Industrial Parks property, I met with him, he's, he's basically got the survey done, uh, other than incorporating more precisely the sewer easement for the new line that wraps around that will serve the train station and the, the service line to, uh, uh, the new service line to the police station. So, once we get that done, that will allow us to engage with Matt to prepare the deed and easement and then we can settle up with, uh, with Vermont Industrial Park, so probably the station will be done before we get that. Get that final land deal, uh, done, but anyway, so that's, uh, uh, that'll be taken care of, so. All in all, you know, it's, uh, it's going good, Bill, you went, you, uh, went in, uh, you know?
They, they meet every Tuesday morning at eight o'clock and I went in last Tuesday and had a, had a interesting tour with everybody and it's, the building, it's funny, the, the slab looks small and then the frame looked big. And then you go inside and some rooms look good, some rooms look big and some rooms look small. But I think that overall, it, the, the feeling is good and the, the chief seems happy and, um, and I, you know, as far as the budget's concerned, so far, so good.
Yeah, you know, at some point, I tell you, like today, I mean, it was a zoo in there, I mean, there was electricians and this and that, it was, it was, we couldn't have given you a walkthrough, but at some point, if, if folks are interested in, we can, we're happy to coordinate a walkthrough. I think it-
Yeah, either, well, we talked about either, you know, like a three or four in the afternoon before it gets real dark or a Saturday morning or something and they're happy to meet us there, so if that's something that-
Saturday morning would be the easiest.
Okay, I mean, I, we can certainly do it and whoever wants to come can, can do it for a half an hour or so, but it's, uh-
I would like to see the inside of the building.
Yeah, yeah, it's, all, all the inter- I'm sorry?
Is it ahead of schedule? Cause it looks-
It is ahead of schedule, yeah, yeah.
Looks like it is.
You know? We've had favorable weather.
They had a, they've got a four-week window for mechanicals, you know, like rough ends and stuff and everybody's saying, oh, they oughta be able to do it in two. But they put in four because you never know, so, so far, so good. And if things keep going, you know, a little bit ahead of schedule, that would be fantastic.
I know they move fast on that roof.
Yeah, roof, roof's done, it's all insula, the exterior insulation is done, all of the steel studs are, are in-
Are inside or?
Are, are, are up. They, um, the, the exterior is all set for the, uh, the cement board and there has, there's some cement board put in on the, on the north side and the contractor had to go to St. John's Berry somewhere because their materials just showed up and so they, they had to be pulled off the job and so they'll be back, uh, doing the, uh, doing the exterior as soon as they get off that job. But, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's coming along fine.
Where is the, I just noticed it today, where is the gas, I assume that the gas tank?
Yeah.
Uh, was just dropped off there, that that is not the location where it's going to be?
Uh, well, the, you, there's a temporary t- t- tank for, right now, but we're gonna have two five-hundred gallon above-ground tanks, uh, on a gravel pad on the south side of the building in anticipation of Vermont Gas coming to Virginia in two thousand. We actually, I mean, just, I, we, you know, the, uh, our zoning per, our zoning permit that we got from the Development Review Board waived the requirement to screen these two five-hundred gallon, uh, propane tanks.
For twenty-four months.
Yeah, until, until Vermont Gas shows up and it won't be any tanks at all. So, that's not, those are not the tanks that you're seeing there, you know? There's a, there's a rental heater out back that's blowing, uh-
So those furnaces would be very adaptable to, to our natural gas.
You just gotta, you gotta change the little nozzles, there's a, there's a conversion kit, but, yeah.
So anyway, that's that.
Well, so, in terms of a Saturday, I mean, it's gonna be busy the next, I mean, would anyone have any preference and we can talk to Brett Loaf about?
I like to see it more done.
Okay.
Cause right now- You want to wait like, like the beginning of December, there's, there's a holiday stroll-
There's no sheet rock up at all, all the steel studs are, are-
So maybe after that, middle of December, I'm just, okay, yeah, okay, we'll see what we can do.
That'd be better for me.
Okay.
So I'm gonna burn, burn through a few other items, uh, seemed like it was long ago that we, uh, we talked about the government shutdown and how that affected us and it did affect us in a couple of things. One is we have one part-time officer that has a, was working under a federal grant through Women Safe and we, we, uh, we and they work together, we just continue to have her work and you're all set with that, Joan, right?
Yeah.
We bill them and we pay it, no issues there. The cops grant, uh, we put in a reimbursement request every three months and at the end of the quarter, the government site was shut down, I couldn't file a request for reimbursement, kept the police officer working, waited through and put in a request for reimbursement, Joan, you got the check in six or seven days, I'm like, yeah.
Good.
Anyway, we're all set there. Uh, insurance claim, pump station, uh, we got a, uh, we put in a, a partial settlement request of a little over sixty thousand dollars. Got that check, right, Joan, got that check? Got that check?
I was thinking of that, why didn't you ask me?
The, the pump station check, you got a check for sixty thousand dollars. We probably have somewhere between, certainly between twenty and thirty, probably twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars more. There's, uh, we still, well, actually, there's a bill in here to Cortland Construction for seventeen or twenty thousand dollars. That's the, that's the installer of the pump station and then there'll be a bill from, uh, ours, what's the company? What's your son's company, is it, RCI, RCI?
RCI.
RCI, we'll get a bill from them and then we'll get a bill from Mission Control, which is the data alarm system that's there. And, uh, I've explained to them that there's some, there's a fire department bill coming, uh, that's in there and there's actually a Public Works sewer bill because there was a fair amount of overtime that was the result of this, so. Now, we won't go crazy with it, but anyway, we were, uh, but they paid the whole thing, there was no issue. Remember at one point I thought, oh shit, that, you know, we're gonna, no pun intended, you were gonna, this is a complete problem.
Well, you were looking at getting appreciated costs as opposed to replacement costs.
Not, you know, not an issue.
Good.
Uh, not an issue at this point and I've, I've kept VLCT passive, uh, advised all along the way and I, and when I told them I got the partial check, they closed the, they closed the claim, I said, well, you know, good, but make sure you can open, reopen that case. We don't quite get made whole because they will make us whole, no, no question there. Uh, sprinkler system, uh, I think at the last meeting I told you that Jesse Dobiecki was here and they did, they did the inspection and it passed. It took us about two or three weeks to finally get the actual results and there was two items in there that, uh, we got a conditional, we have a conditional approval. They, Alpine, they were, they were down in the office yesterday, right, Joan?
Yeah.
Uh, they need to have a, a, uh, fire department connection to the dry system that's out at the end of the alley and they've figured out how they're gonna plumb that, that was item number one. Item number two, which we knew about, was that the alarm panel did not have enough zones to, uh, on it, to accommodate all of the things associated with this sprinkler system and so that's item number two. And this panel got put in, in, uh, panel got put in in nineteen ninety-seven and, uh, and they needed an expansion card, all right, nineteen, sixteen years ago, need an expansion card. Found an expansion card, the eight-zone expansion.
What are the odds of that?
They got a hold of an expansion card for the eight-zone, eight-zone expansion card, so, uh, we've got them working on that. And, uh, it get, we're protected, the sprinkler system, it's running, it's all set. We got the Public Works guys, uh, Matt and, and Pat come up every, on the first of every month, test the, uh, the fire pump, make sure that's good. Uh, don't forget, we, we fronted the Friends of Virgin's Opera House, fifty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Uh, I put together the request to obtain the, the, uh, downtown historic tax credits and, uh, the check came in, I don't know, either Monday or last Friday, you know? Made payable to the Friends of Virgin's Opera House and the treasurer came up and signed the back of it and gave it to Joan, so we got thirty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars here. The Vermont Arts Council Grant, which is the other twenty thousand dollars, uh, their process is, is, uh-
Laborious?
Yeah, yeah, it is, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a project to get your money, uh, for them and part of the proj, uh, it's a shared, Jerry Ann knows what she has to do, I know what I have to do, they will not release that money until we have an unconditional, here are the buildings protected, you'd think they could release the twenty thousand bucks, you know, I mean, it, it did what it, the grant did what it's supposed to do. But they don't like the fact that we got this conditional approval, so they, uh, so obviously that's motivating us to get that, uh, get that done. Associated with this, uh, I had, uh, one of the things that I didn't pick up on when we got the inspection results, but the, their, their, uh, report carried the same occupancy limit that it had been carrying for years of a hundred and fifty, all right? And it just didn't jump off the page to me because I'm reading, I'm, I'm reading the conditions part. Well, it jumped off the page for Jerry Ann, uh, saying, what the hell is, is this? So, so anyway, I, we, I had Jesse come down, pointed it out to him, he said, well, that's just, that's what we had on my computer, nobody asked me to reset that. I said, well, we need this thing reset, we got Jamie Thurston coming here in a matter of a week or so, so, uh, anyway, he came down, did all kinds of calculations, measured stairs, it's a science about figuring out-
Yeah, it is.
Figuring out capacity and we think that we're gonna end up with a number of, I, I think the number's gonna be two eighty-five at the end of the day. It won't be three hundred, the determining factor is the stairway that leads down, the, the, the main stairway in the front, that width of that stairway is, is a determining factor, so we'll get the, we'll get the two eighty-five. I did point out to Jerry Ann that they need to change the way that they've got their chairs set up up in the balcony. The, uh, the balcony actually ends up with less and it's, it's, it's really just because of square footage up there. There really can only be forty-one people up in the balcony, uh, so that's where they're, that's why they're dropping down, part of the reason why is to two eighty-five as opposed to three hundred or something, so, so anyway, that's, we're almost there on the sprinkler system. We got our trash grant, uh, the, uh, you know, all of the trash receptacles that we bought, uh, that check should be coming, Joan, soon. I, you know, I, the way that it worked is the executive board, we applied for five thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and some change and the executive board only had authority to give five thousand, I said, just send me the five thousand, that, that'd be okay. Well, they, they put it on the agenda of the full board, we're supposed to get five thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-six cents, so, we're good with that.
Yep, so yeah, well, how many, twenty, twenty trash cans for five thousand bucks?
Joe, you wanna talk about your grant?
I do, I would, thank you very much. As many of you know, we've been planning a toddler playground, um, and I, I believe last meeting we mentioned that we had applied for a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars, we were awarded twenty-one thousand dollars, which I think is pretty good. So, uh, uh, we received a twenty-one thousand dollar grant from the state recreation-
Facilities.
Facilities grant.
Community facilities.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're having a meeting, the Recreation Committee will be meeting this Saturday, I've asked David Raphael to upgrade the, um, the, one of the biggest, uh, concerns from area residents was parking, so I've asked him and he has agreed to upgrade the plan to include parking and we'll be discussing that this Friday and I'll have some more information for you next time around.
Great, okay.
Just, uh, three other little items I wanna, I'm sorry-
If I could just add, I wanted to thank Mel and Tara Brooks for a lot of work on that grant, wanted to make sure that they were properly thanked.
Thank you.
Thanks, good.
Like, just a couple of other things, I just wanna let you know that the, the DRB and the Planning Commission are, uh, they're working me to death is what they're, what they're doing, they, uh, the DRB, it's, I don't know that I can remember a time when they were, uh, they got, we got loyal, lo- loyal, we have- But we have one, we have one member actually was had some illness in their family, and so Lo- Lo- Lo's been a regular. You know, it's really, and, and Lo, you know, no different than Zig, all of a sudden, you don't find out about it until three-thirty in the afternoon. We meet somebody at six o'clock, you know, so anyway, Lo, Lo's been filling in.
Actually, it was more like twenty after.
All right.
Like, can you go ask him?
But anyway, the, the D R B, uh, they had a, they had a hearing on the, on the Neil's Family Market last, uh, last night, and, uh, they'll be going into deliberative session, which involves obviously converting what is currently Deniker's Service, uh, Office to, to Neil's Family Market. So, the, the D R B is busy with that, uh, with that application. The other application is back in two thousand and seven, the D R B, uh, reviewed and actually approved a project called Claybrook, uh, which is, uh, on, on the bourgeois property, if you will.
I was gonna say, that was bourgeois.
And then they just, what happened with that project in two thousand and seven was obviously, if you recall, the economy in two thousand and seven, uh, it just was not the time to start doing a three-million-dollar real estate, uh, development project in Virgin's Vermont. Uh, and so what they did is they, they split that project up. They abandoned that large project, split it up, did the seven-lot, uh, project along Hopkins Road. I think four lots had been sold, right, Lynn? And, and so there's, I know I'll get that in another year, that, that'll be done. And so, Peter Kahn has put the other part of this project on the table. So, there's a public hearing scheduled for December second, uh, for a fifty-unit, planned unit development on that, uh, on that parcel. The, uh, the Planning Commission also met last night. They're, uh, I'm gonna say about, you know, at least twenty-five percent of the way into their municipal development plan rewrite. You know, you, it's how fast five years goes.
Well, it's more of an update, isn't it? It's not a rewrite.
Or not. You know, it's, uh, it's funny, I was explaining to the board last night that we really thought that this was gonna be pretty simple. You had this beautiful plan. You're gonna go through, we're gonna update the data, and we'll be able to document the various changes. And then when you get into it, you know, there's a lot of things that have happened in five years that, you know, like police station, the city acquiring the swimming pool, toddler park, you know, there's lots of things that are at a different point. So, um, we haven't abandoned the thought of being able to deliver an updated plan to the city council where you could see exactly what the changes are. But i- if this document gets to change, you end up with a four-hundred-page document, and then, and you won't have me bringing you a four-hundred-page document. So, it's still early, but anyway, they're, they're, you know, Shannon's got the whip out there. He's. We're like getting here. I think it'll, we hope to get this to the city council. I think the tar-, I really think the target is the first of June. That's what I think, because it expires in September. I think it's September. Uh, so, that's the point on there. That's all I had to.
Okay. Um, one other thing quickly that Mel brought in the sign here.
Yeah.
This is the, uh, Virgin's Burying Ground Cemetery sign.
Nice.
Which, uh, Pat Crowley did the lettering, and Rebecca Duffy did the weeping willow. And so, we're gonna keep that until probably spring. Um, Sue Furlan was getting some estimates on the fence, and, and I, then I went down Middlebury Fence, and we decided on a shorter fence. Uh, don't have a price on it yet, but the plan is to maybe have, have it all set and ready to go in the spring. So, we'll have a, a fence along Mountain View and, uh, school and the new sign, and at least spruce that cemetery up. Um, the other thing that I'll bring you up to date on was the courtyard, which we discussed at length a few weeks ago. Um, Jerry Ann presented the courtyard plan, you know, the, the, the large bulbout plan. Conceptually, we all kind of agreed on it, but there were issues about parking, um, and then there were cost issues. And I, so we wouldn't have to deal with it on a, on a, you know, regular meeting basis, and because time is of the essence, I appointed a committee to, to look into that plan. And it was Mel and Joan, Shannon Haggott, uh, Rennie Perry, Jerry Ann Smart, and Terry Faithwise. They had a meeting. Um, I think there was a big concern about the, 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 the loss of parking spaces. One of the other issues that came up that Shannon and Mel thought about was, was important is that technically, the marquee is within the highway rate of way, which is illegal. And to move it another ten feet further makes it even more illegal, and the precedent that that would set relative to the city and other applicants and so on.
I had one person come up, and he says, not only is it on Main Street, you got it on twenty-two A.
Yeah.
He said, you just.
You know, so as much as we liked that plan, there were, there were a lot of things that actually came to the floor after the discussion. So, then there was a smaller bulbout that was gonna keep two parking spaces. It didn't alleviate the illegality of the marquee. Um, and then there was, there were some other issues about elevation. And so, the Opera House, Jerry Ann has said, you know, we just wanna sell bricks, and we wanna restore our marquee. And at this point, the, the committee had, will be meeting again to finalize a plan and put a budget together. But I think that the, it appears that the sidewalk will probably remain with the way it is. The marquee will stay where it is. There may be some additional lighting. There may be some, some limbing up of some trees. There're gonna be some things to make it more visible. It'll have granite curbing, the bricks, and so on and so forth. I, I'm, I'm staying out of it. This is what I know from the committee. But I think that probably in December, they wanna come here with a final plan and a budget that we can look at and, and discuss.
Cause I asked quite a few people, you know, and then people were asking me, so I just, I think probably twelve or thirteen people, and they're all, people at Opera House too, and they just felt that maybe, you know, it shouldn't, the parking places were very important.
Yeah.
You know, everybody.
Well, you know, once you, once you get into detail, everyone, you know, there, there were a lot of issues. So, it'll look better regardless, and everybody, it'll be a win-win. It's, you know, I think there was a few tense moments, but it's behind us, so that's good.
I wanted to mention about, about Didier's.
Oh, yeah, the, uh.
Just briefly, I didn't, I didn't meet with Jim Lomatt about, about this, and, uh.
Oh, well, I didn't hear.
About Didier Marat.
Didier Marat, the, uh, the Southwater Street piece of land that we talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
I also was able to locate the entire survey.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the, uh, it was a Lee Lowell survey, and Mike McGoon, who's a surveyor in Ferrisburg, he ended up, there was somebody else who owned the surveys in between, but anyway, I was able to track, uh, uh, track that down, and I have two copies of that, and they're actually gonna get them, they're gonna be a, get a Mylar. I think part of the reason why I was half a survey is because the survey that I have in nineteen sixty-eight of Albert Frost's property is before he sold off a chunk to, uh, to the house that, that, that's there. So, as it turns out, that lot isn't two-point-five-five acres. It's about one-point-five-five acres, really. So, anyway, we'll get, we'll get that.
We'll get that all squared away, yeah.
And so, the public, there's a thirty-day notice requirement. Jim just couldn't, uh, get the paperwork together in time for a December public hearing, so it'll be a January, we think the first meeting in January will be your public hearing. Notices will go out to, to interested parties.
Yep. And one last thing, we talked about the, we were talking about the gas line, and we were, Mel and I were curious about the revenue that it was gonna bring the city. And they, they gave us the total linear footage of gas line, and I guess it's valued at twenty dollars a linear foot, and we were all excited, and it's actually a little over nine thousand dollars a year. So, it's less than a penny on the, less than half a penny on the tax rate. So, we're not gonna get rich on it, but it's better than nothing, right? So, anyway, that's, anybody else have anything they wanna bring up?
No, I don't.
No? Guys all set? Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Waiting in second. I'll favor.
All right.
Bye.